It is now seven o'clock, but we're going to continue on with our meeting. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, this portion of the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item is, excuse me, public non-agenda items only, public forum. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak to a non-agenda item? Mr. Provo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Provo. I live at 16 Beach Street. I would just like to give the town council a little bit of information on the civic space that's coming up. We have formalized and elected a board of directors. I was elected president for one year, lucky me, I guess.
Congratulations.
John Herman is the vice president, Judy Ryan is secretary, and Nancy Cathan is the treasurer. Other board members include John Carmichael, David Legault. These are representatives, Historical Society, Veterans Memorial Trust. This is kind of a unique organization in that we've all been cobbled together over the last couple of years through all these organizations working on this process. We do have a, yeah, website now. It's actually a blog spot, but you can go in and eventually you'll be able to take a virtual tour and sign up for information. And we're basically at the point in time where we're working on the build-out process and things like that and looking at starting to generate a fundraising campaign. And we do need to say point-blank that this is not something that we're looking at taxpayers' funding, that this is a result of the RFP and the charrettes that were done during the process of the mill redevelopment project, that the community wanted to reserve public access to those mills. And so basically what's being developed, the committee likes to describe, I think the best description was coming from Laka and Kim Foss on the board, this was to be the community living room for Newmarket. So it's a multifunctional space, and I think the city's, the town's going to be really happy to have it. So we are moving forward, and it is going forward, and it's the vanilla box, it's starting to get cleaned up and things. So we're hoping we'll be in sooner rather than later, but we do have a very large task ahead of us in raising funds, so.
Great.
So thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Any questions or...
Council Bentley?
Is this, is the address on our website, Mike? Is there a link?
I don't think there's a link yet, but it is.
Can you say it again slower for everyone?
It is, it's http: milspace, all one word, dot wordpress dot com. And it should come up, even if you Google "Newmarket Milspace," you should be able to get into it that way. But it's just started, you can put your name in, and we give you heads-up for the meetings and things. And we also want to thank the town for letting us have our meetings downstairs in the town hall auditorium and things, so. But we've still kept that whole committee of all of the organizations working together, and I think that's something that really speaks in the town's favor, so.
Go ahead, Council Zink.
The vanilla box that the town will be receiving, is that a box that's got a finished floor, painted walls, heat, air conditioning?
It will have, it will have utilities stubbed into it, it will have actual new windows and doors, it will be secured, it will have a polished concrete floor, and the ceiling, the columns, the brick walls will all be blasted. Of course, with tax credit projects, you can't blast them a lot, but some of the old paint and things will still be showing through, but then they'll be sealed, and that's the way we'll be receiving that. And basically, the town receives that in the form of a 99-year lease for a dollar per year, which is held by the NCDC. And the lease is renewable for another 99 years, and I was able to pay the first year's rent, so we're all set.
You're going to be here for the renewal of it?
That's going to be up to the, the board of directors. They may oust me, who knows?
Thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else, non-public, non-public, public forum? Council Bentley?
Couple things, I don't know if I'm allowed to say it, but I'm going to say it, and I can be censored if so, but Newmarket lost one of its favorite sons in my heart, and thoughts go out to the Russell and Foss family with Adam Russell's passing, tragic thing.
Second, full-heartedly.
Earlier tonight, in, in the last two meetings that I've sat here for, we had a lot of discussion about non-public meetings and the council, and ethics and morals. And I said it once before, and I'm going to, you know, state it again for everybody, we, under the advice of a lawyer, town council entered a session under the advice of our council. So if someone can question, if a decision was made that maybe we shouldn't have, but we did it under legal advice, we entered into it to listen to a proposal, one we heard about tonight, and that's all we did once, is listen to a proposal. What's alarming to me is all the backlash and people that allegedly care about our town so much. We could be hiring a lawyer to defend ourselves for something that was pretty trivial in my mind, but apparently maybe people don't care about our town as much if they're asking us to pay taxpayers' dollars to get a lawyer. Things were leaked out of that meeting, which is kind of an issue in itself, to papers, to other people, that, you know, there's going to be 27 trips an hour, and there's going to be this and that, and I was told yesterday there's nuclear stuff going there, and that's, I sat in the meeting and most people didn't. So I just want it very clear, when people are questioning morals and ethics, they can question our decisions, but there's, it's, it's a very fine line when people start talking about shenanigans and morals and unethical behavior. And I, you know, I take it real to heart, and I had a conversation with people this week about it. I'm an eighth-generation Newmarket person, I plan on dying here, certainly not anytime soon, but I've been here a lot of years, my family's been here a lot of years, and I try to do my best, I think the council tries to their best, I'm very proud of the council we have up here. There's never been a night I walked out of here and thought, anyone sitting up here didn't have the town's best interests. We don't always agree, we won't always agree, but people want to keep saying things for the record of what's been going on, and that's what's been going on. We had one non-public, under the advice of our lawyer, with a Black Bear tiff, and two people that represented a company that, that wanted to come here. And it makes sense, again, if, if you say it's company ABC, and then the next town over says, oh, ABC's there, we're going to bring them, and then you lose potential for, for business. And a lot of the old timers will remember, in 1973, Budweiser came here and we said, nah, we don't want that plant here, that's messy, they're going to pollute, and what a beautiful plant it is, and what a beautiful facility they bought from Merrimack High, built from Merrimack High School. So like Council Berger and Council Zink said earlier, we owe it to the town to listen to everybody that comes, and that's all we've ever done. And I've been here almost a year, and we only had one event. One, one group came and talked to us, we listened, said thank you, and walked away. So just, I didn't say it the last two times, and I heard it a third time, and I've heard it on the streets and in the coffee shops, and I wanted to say, from my perspective on the record of what's been happening. So that's it.
Thank you, Council Bentley.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else? Anybody out in the audience? Nothing? All right. We're going to move on to the first item agenda, first item on the agenda. I'm having trouble speaking. All right, adoption of employee contribution towards health insurance. I see Julie is here. Ms. Glover, welcome. Could you just give us a quick rundown of the memo you have in front of us, or the edits to the plan?
Sure. Other than cleaning up some, first off, some language that I felt was awkward, and trying to put together two almost identical paragraphs regarding the health and the dental insurance, the, the biggest change in this is having the, putting it into a policy that the employees are responsible for paying 20% of the health and dental insurance premiums. What I maybe either should have included in this or somehow suggested to the council is that if this passes, it not be effective until the July 1 renewal. I also, as you can see, took out some language relative to civil unions, because in the state of New Hampshire, we no longer have civil unions as defined by RSA 457. And again, I just tried to clean the language up about the, with the cohabitation clause.
Councils have any comments on this? Council LaBranch?
Julie, the increase in the employees' portion, how many employees will that affect? Does that affect all employees?
Thirteen.
Thirteen? Out of?
Well, there's currently, I think it's 44 in total, take the town's health insurance right now.
Okay, so the, so the rest, the other individuals are paying the 20% as we speak?
Most of the employees pay 20%. Thirteen employees pay 10%, and then there are, I think it's about eight employees who don't take the town's health insurance right now, they have the buyout.
That's it?
Yes.
Council Zink?
Excuse me. I'm a little bit unclear as to what you're asking for, Julie.
I am here at the request of, I thought, the town council, who wanted a draft of a policy that they could vote on that would establish 20% as the contribution towards the health and dental premiums for all employees.
Okay. That's what I thought. I thought, the last time we left this subject, and I could be wrong, but I thought we had asked for it, I had asked for some competitive data, not only from municipalities, but also from companies in this area, so that we don't jump into a contribution to medical insurance that we're going to have to revisit because of changes that are going on in the marketplace right now. So that's really what I expected, and I also, in this I don't believe, I mean, I don't know. The other issue was not only the contribution that employees would make to the plan, but an idea as to how this plan competes in the marketplace, both municipalities and companies, as it relates to things like deductibles, out-of-pocket maxes, and so forth. In other words, my expectation was to, before we, before I made, tried to make an appropriate decision on this, to get some competitive data so I understood what the marketplace looked like.
All of that is forthcoming, all of that is something that I'm currently working on. Two things, one, however, I'm at somewhat of a loss, I was simply asked for this council meeting to draft a policy that would move all of the employees to a 20% contribution. This is not, in lieu of my coming forward with any further information, again, I'm in the process of, I have some meetings set up this week, next week, in terms of gathering the information that we talked about getting at the last meeting.
Yeah, through, through no fault of yours, I think this is just premature.
Yeah, this is just something that I was asked to do for this meeting.
Council Zink, let me check for one second.
Yeah.
From my perspective, no matter what that number is, 15%, 20%, 30%, 40%, I don't think the council, we should ever necessarily approve a number, which I'll, you know, we should give the latitudes that whatever the council approves for that year is what it is in the budget process. So I mean, so I don't think we want to lock ourselves into every year having to say, well, it's 20%, and I'll make next year go to 25%, but, you know, that's a discussion we can have as we get more information.
Again, I, perhaps this is my misunderstanding, I thought, that's why I started off the question by saying, what is this about? And I see a number in here that says 20%. If that had been blank percent, I would agree with you.
Yes.
But it, but it's not. It's indicating an approval for 20%, and I couldn't do that without seeing the competitive. If, on the other hand, it's just an outline for a policy of what a policy would look like, then I understand.
This is, this is actually an edit to our existing policy?
Right.
That, that's what the lines are, so we, we have a policy, but, I mean, I agree with you that my intention was never to have the 20% in there, let's talk about what the policy says, and then we can decide whether we insert a number or whether we leave it floating.
That's...
So I agree with you, that's, was lost in the translation.
That's fine.
Council LaBranch?
I, I have a feeling that, that this 20% and the discussion and the direction that Ms. Glover was given was due to the fact that, if I'm not mistaken, fiscal year, the new budget that we're looking to adopt, having the town adopt at the vote, reflects that 20% within it.
Correct.
So, but, you know, if, if this council doesn't accept that 20%, then the budget numbers, to some extent, are wrong. And I, and I think that may be why you have that figure in there. I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here, but, you know, I, I think it all relates to the fact that, that, that we have a budget coming up that's going to have a public hearing on the 15th, that within that budget is showing that those 13 people are going to be now paying 20%.
Yes, in an, in an indirect way. In other words, we wanted to level fund the health and, health and dental insurance premiums going into the next fiscal year. One of the ways that we accomplished that was by moving everyone to a 20% contribution. We also changed everyone to the Matthew Thornton Plan and changed the prescription drug plan. So those three things together got us to a level funded number. But you are correct, it is conceivable that in the next couple of months, as I come forward with, whatever I come forward with, another proposal, we, we may not, we may end up doing something entirely different.
Right. The fact that we've already approved the budget, and if the budget gets passed as is, it's 20%.
Right.
That's done.
Yep.
To me, this, this document just needs to be more flexible, not have a percentage in there, have, you know, whatever, as set by the council in the budget process every year.
Well, we could...
Then you don't have to renew this every year.
Right, and we could just revert to similar language that we had, which is just that it's at a cost to the employees.
Right.
And not define that cost within the policy.
Right.
Just like we don't define the plan within the policy.
Right. Understand, but we need that backup before we, we need, there's bigger discussions that need to be held on what we're going to do before we...
Absolutely.
Move on something like this.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have anything else? I think we're all set with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. All right. Item number two is, I think, really just to let those at home, and if any of councils aren't aware of it, with the governor's proposed budget for the next biennium, he, the governor's proposal eliminates the state's contribution to the retirement plan completely. The state's going to, they're going from what was, I think, 35% to 30 to, now they're going to go to zero. What that would do, would that, if, if that were to take, if that were to pass immediately, the town's costs would go up by $200,000, a little bit over $200,000. I personally don't think that the budget's going to pass with that in it, in May. We've already voted on our budget, I don't think there's much we can do about it this year, especially whereby that's a, that's a revenue line, that's not a, a budget line item, that's revenue coming back. Would it impact the budget? Absolutely. It'd mean there'd be, you know, $200,000 less to spend if, if the state doesn't give us any of that money. So I wanted to let the people at home know about that, and let councils know about that, and if there's any discussion, we can have it, but it's just something, you know, I don't think it's a surprise, this train's coming down the tracks at us, that we're going to have to deal with. Council Zink?
I guess I'm speaking from a budget member's standpoint. When I received this, this notification that, that'd be a $200,000, potentially a $200,000 inquiry, or dec, as you say...
Decrease in revenue.
Decrease in revenue. My first thought went to, it's shocking, but what's even more shocking than that is what it's going to do to the school's budget, because it could be a million dollars. So I, I don't know how to handle this, Mr. Chairman, but I think with that kind of impact on our budget, that we need to decide whether we should revisit budgets. Because in the case of the school at least, as I understand it, once the budget is approved, regardless of decrease in revenues, those monies can and will be spent. So I don't know whether that's something that we should go to the chair of the Budget Committee, or, or how we should address that, but I think as a town, it's a pretty significant, it has the potential of a real big hit. So I don't know what the answer is, I just bring it up for discussion.
Yeah, I don't know either. I, I think with the school, I think it's, it's too far gone, because they've already had the deliberative session.
I don't know.
I mean, I, I agree with you, I mean, it's something that needs to, to be looked at. I don't even know if we can reopen the budget, I don't know if we're too far gone for our perspective.
I don't either, I just, I just bring it up for discussion.
Yeah? No, I think it's a valid point. But what we're talking about is, you know, if it's a million dollars for the school, we'd be talking about, the only way you could offset that would be to increase your budget by a million dollars and the town budget by $200,000. Or look for additional savings. Either or, you know, neither one would be very pleasant.
I don't, I mean, all, I suspect all the other towns in New Hampshire are going to be facing the same thing, and if, if people are revisiting budgets because of this, I think the discussion should at least, on behalf of the taxpayers, be had.
Yeah?
But I don't know how to initiate it.
I agree. I'm not sure we, I, I think all's we can do is, at this point, ask our legal counsel if there's anything we can do. And the school would have to do the same thing, and we can, if, if there's anything that can be done at this point in the budget cycle to change what we've already done, if there's an appetite for it. You know, I mean, just because it's a $200,000 decrease in revenue doesn't necessarily equate to a $200,000 increase in the budget. You know, the council or the budget committee could decide to cut another $200,000 out of the budget to make ends meet. So it could be a very, it would be a very interesting discussion. Council Bentley?
Well, one thing it says in the last paragraph is, propose the council send a letter to the Senate and Executive Department's Administrative Committee, at least, is that an avenue?
Well, yes, I think we need to be on record, I imagine that every city in town and every state legislature would be...
Let's talk to our local legislatures and...
Right.
Yes, this is, this is pretty scary. That's it.
With your approval, I will contact the chair of the Budget Committee.
Sure. It's fine, if the rest of the council is okay with that, I'm okay with that, especially where you're a representative to it, sure. And I, I mean, I'd like, I'd propose that we, we give Ed the authority to write a letter for my signature, you know, supporting the changes to the legislation that would, you know, alter that. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
As an avenue to, to go. And I will, when Ed is back from his illness, I will, excuse me, talk to him about, talking to our legal counsel and finding out what, if anything, we can do about it at this point. And I'll report back at, hopefully at our next meeting, we'll have some information, maybe a direction. And I will also call, I'll make, I'll make it my work to call Adam Schroider and talk about, ask about, from a legislative perspective, what, what's the talk on the, in Concord about whether this has any chance of passing or not, try to get a feel for that. Council LaBranch?
I guess I want to disagree with, with your concept of this is revenues that we're not realizing, the $200,000. I, I agree, that's revenues that we're not realizing, but we also need the right to expend that $201,000 within our budget. So, you know, having said that, I really feel that, at this point, we need to take a hard look at if we can adjust the bottom line of the budget by that $200,000 to offset this, because this is still money that the town has to raise through, through taxes, regardless of if it's a revenue or not, or, or a lack of a revenue.
Right.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely.
So, you know, the fact that I, I really feel, and I feel very strongly, that, that we had, once again, for probably the third year in a row, a bare-bones budget, this $200,000 impacts that budget substantially, I feel. So I, I think that the question, and if, if Council Zink would ask it, or maybe even if you would check with town administrator to see what we can, if we can in fact change the bottom-line dollar value on, on the budget, which would also increase the default budget, because it's, you know, the default budget reflects any changes that, that are by contractual or obligations, and this is an obligation that we have, so, you know, it's, it's, I hate getting these things at the 11th hour, but I, I think that rather than just sit back, you know, before we get to that public hearing on the 15th, we, we need to have some, some information on this.
I, I agree wholeheartedly. The only adjustment or different point of view I would have on that is that because this $200,000 would be a shortfall in revenue, doesn't necessarily mean that we need to raise the budget $200,000. If we do a dollar-for-dollar, I agree with you, and if the council's decision is that's what we want to do, that's fine, but there also needs to be discussions about other ways to save money, if there are any. I agree, we have a very lean, lean budget, but, you know, I, I don't think we can just say at this point, we're getting $200,000 less in revenue, so let's raise the budget $200,000. We'd have to have, you know, we'd have to go back and have hearings on it and everything, and whatever comes out of it, comes out of it, but I mean, I think we'd, we'd need to reopen and look at everything in the budget to see what, see where we can come up with the money. And like Council Zink said, I mean, it's $200,000 for the town, but it's a million dollars for the school.
By the way, I just...
Oh, a number, right.
That number right out of my back pocket.
They have five times the employees the town has, basically.
Probably pretty accurate.
Yeah. That, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a pretty situation. So why don't we do that? I'll talk to the administrator and get some legal advice, and you can talk, Council Zink, talk to the chairman of the Budget Committee.
Yep.
And see what, see what, if they can do anything with the school budget, or how they want to handle it with the, maybe the school board, I mean, they have, they'd have to be involved in the conversation also, so.
Okay.
But it's not a, not a good situation, hopefully it won't come to fruition, but we do need to understand the possibilities that it might happen. And if it doesn't happen this year, it'll certainly happen next year or the year after, it's coming. So, okay. Any other comment on that? Nothing, we'll move forward to item three, which is a review of the warrant articles.
Are we reviewing each one?
If I'm not mistaken, didn't, didn't we already basically approve these?
We already did that.
But we've got to change to number five, is it? Article five?
Yes.
That we need, that we should discuss, and make sure we're still, yes, because we have already voted on this, so at this point it'd be...
The only, the only change to the warrant article that, that we previously voted on was that Leo Filion was correct in that we were not, we were not authorized to spend the money, we weren't agents, so the last line of Article five was added to, say, at the town council's agents to expend from the fund. So, I, Council LaBranch?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article five as amended.
Second, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Erica, would you call the roll, please?
House of Congress?
Aye.
House of Representatives?
Aye.
House of Lords?
Aye.
House of Branches?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Agenda item four is a nominee for town library trustee. Councilor Bentley?
I make a motion to approve Sandra Allen for position of library trustee.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. This is the only application we've received, and the term is set to expire in May of 2013. Does anybody have any comments, discussion, concerns? Hearing none. Erica, would you call the roll, please?
House of Congress?
Aye.
House of Representatives?
Aye.
House of Lords?
Aye.
House of Branches?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six to zero. For the sake of saving time, we did get an update from the town administrator today on the sheet that Council LaBranch had given us. If anybody has any questions on that, we can, or comments, we can talk. Other than that, I'll just wait, and we'll talk with Mr. Winowski when he's here and feeling better.
I'd just like to, I don't know what the process is, but there's certainly a number of things on this list that can come off. on this list that can come off. Thought we cleaned it up. There's several on here that can come off.
Yep. What I would suggest is, is have a conversation with, or an email to Ed, and he can tell us that he plans on deleting the things that's on us. We agree with that.
Okay.
I think that would be the cleanest, easiest way to deal with it. All right, next is old business. Anybody have old business? Council Bentley?
Just don't, I know it was just said recently, but another thing I've heard a lot of buzz on the last couple of weeks is the dam, and some are convinced we're tearing it down, and some are convinced we're doing this. There's been no decisions, we're at fact finding, correct?
Correct.
And some emails were flying around and something, and I got spoken about, asked about a couple of people about it. So, just again, I know, I think Chairman Bodman brought up a couple of weeks back, there have been no decisions, we're a long ways from that, I believe, and it also, I believe, isn't just our decision. Need the civil engineer, the, and the fish and game department-
You need state.
-has a piece of that.
Absolutely.
So we're far from any decisions on that, and I'm sure there'll be public hearings if we got filed along on it or-
Yes. My, the discussion started about removing the dam because of statements that were made that the dam was in imminent danger of failing. And I don't know if you remember, there were people sitting down by the library in chairs-
Yep, waiting for it to-
Waiting for the dam to fail. We had a study done, and the dam was, was not in danger of failing. So, the idea of removing the dam, I think, was pretty much taken off the table. If somebody in this town wants to go through the process of trying to permit removing the dam, it'll go through the process. It's very expensive. We had a gentleman from the state here say, you know, it was going to be $100,000 or so to permit removing the dam. It'll be 10 times that. But if somebody wants to do it, they're more than welcome to do it, much like we have a proposal about doing electric power on the dam, and if somebody wants to do that and permit it, I'm fine with that, and I understand that there's probably going to be a petition warrant article, a town meeting to remove the dam. If the town, the people in this town want to vote to authorize the dam to be removed, that's fine. You know, whatever way the people want.
A particular concern was a newspaper article that one of the people showed me, and I don't know which paper, doesn't really matter, and it said a committee had been formed to remove it because it was going to alleviate downstream flooding. And I said, I know nothing about it, and we're far away from-
Right.
-removing anything.
That's correct.
So I just want that clear out there. There's a lot of-
That's correct.
-jumble going on about it.
That's correct. Council LaBranche?
And just to tag along on that, one of the things that I wanted to bring up during old business was the fact that we have someone that's requesting permitting the dam for hydropower, and I think that's something that the council needs to discuss, whether or not the town wants to hold the permit, which, from my point of view, I'm probably not in favor of holding the permits for it, but if this individual wants to move forward and get the permitting for it, you know, then all's well and good, but I would strongly recommend that we discuss that at the workshop-
Yep.
-and hopefully come to some kind of a conclusion. And the other thing that I think, because we're running into, starting to get into the season where people will be putting their tables and chairs out on the main street, I think we really need to get through this seasonal vendor ordinance that we started working on. So I really think that that should be brought up at the workshop so we can potentially pass it at the next business meeting in April.
Yeah, that needs a lot of work.
I know, it needs a lot of work, but, but the thing is, is you, we, you know, we-
Have to do it.
Yeah, we've got to get it done, because there's going to be people that are going to be requesting permits down there.
Yep. And, yeah, for the record, I don't, I don't think we should hold the permit for that either. We shouldn't be in the real estate business, we certainly shouldn't be in the electric generating business. We should take advantage of them when we can, but leave those to the professionals, is my opinion. Anybody have anything else on the old business? I have one quick thing on new business. Of all the councils, I passed out the evaluation form. If you would spend some time in the next week or two and fill those out. What's happened in the past is, the chair has compiled the information and has come up with average scores for the various items, and then we've sat down and discussed them as a council, and then we'll discuss them with the administrator. And if anybody has any recommendations as to changing how they want to do it, I'm certainly open to-
Bring this back to your box or put, mail it to you?
You can, you can put it in an envelope, put it in my box, mail it to me. However you-
Deadline.
Um, you want to say a week from Friday? Does that give everybody enough time? Next Friday? That way I'll have the weekend to compile them before the next meeting, at least we'll keep the ball-
Good idea.
...process moving forward before the next meeting. Is that okay with you, Council Bergeron?
Yes.
You look concerned, perplexed.
He'll do it on vacation.
Do it on the plane.
I was, no, never mind. Council LaBranche?
Just one other thing, this is kind of under old business, and it's an offer that Council Bergeron has, has put to the council at least twice, that I recall, in reference to go visiting a wastewater treatment plant in Hooksett, I believe. And I, I take it that no one has either gotten back to you in reference to setting this up or not, but I'm sitting here saying that I know this is a big decision the town's going to have to make in the near future, and if you set up a date certain to go, I will be riding along with you. Yeah, the individual I spoke to just said make the date, and they'll accommodate it, and Saturdays work well for them.
Saturdays work well, I think, for me also, so-
Yeah, I'll make it as well.
I'll email everyone tomorrow, and we'll just set up a time.
Great.
Hopefully, maybe March.
This month?
Coffee and donuts before, right?
You probably won't have an appetite afterwards, so yes. All right, is there anything else? Anybody?
I should be green.
Oh, you're not. There you are, now you are.
What would you like us to put for evaluation period? Is it fiscal year, is it calendar year?
It would be, from your instance, it would be May, May of last year. Oh, oh, actually, you didn't get on the council till-
From whenever he started.
Wait, whenever you started on the council.
The end of May.
Oh, was the end of May? Okay.
Did you give me anything for my year anniversary yet?
You haven't hit it yet.
Wow.
I'm optimistic, I might take it another two months. May. It's on order. You see it on fire on your front steps. And everybody else, it's from-
And end it December?
No. March.
Eight minutes.
March. Say March 1st is the end date. Because that's what we agreed, which was the evaluation period for him.
All right.
So these are performance evaluations, obviously the appraiser identifies themselves.
Yes. Then I will blindly, I will not identify anybody when I compile everything. And then we'll have a discussion with Mr. Winowski about it. Oftentimes, it's pretty easy to tell who said what by the conversation. You know, if there's a, if there's a, somebody has a lot of, you know, the end does not meet, then you know, in the discussions, you know who it is by the conversations we have. So, I think Council Bergeron gave this to us, was it last year? Must have been last year. I think it worked pretty well, because before then it was really, this made it a lot more organized. It's not the, you know, I mean, doesn't, it's not all encompassing, but it's, it's something a lot better than what we had, so.
I think, like, for instance, I still see, here, I remember we discussed removing the safety component, because we don't see him, the administrator, using safety equipment, but-
Yep. Well, just put NA.
If you don't know about it, you just write you don't know.
Put NA.
You have no knowledge.
Yeah, because basically, when I scored it last year or anything, and it was an NA, just didn't even factor in.
Didn't count, right.
Wasn't factored in.
Right. I haven't heard of any paper cuts or anything in the town halls lately, so. All right.
Next meeting?
Next meeting-
Public hearing, fifteenth, actually.
Is public hearing the fifteenth. That's correct.
Tax day.
And that?
March 15th.
March 15th.
That wouldn't be tax day. You said six weeks, April 15th, thought in my head.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion's made second, and all in favor?
Ayes.
Aye.
Thank you.